The time is eight fifty-nine. And the board is now reconvened in open session. We'll now consider action on our closed session items. Mr. Burdine.
Yes, Madam President. Recommended board action on hearing officer recommendation concerning Eileen Harper. I move that the Board of Trustees accept the hearing officer's recommendation concerning the Level Three Employee Grievance Appeal of Eileen Harper.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Burdine and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Ms. Hellinger, do you have a item?
I move that the Board of Trustees suspend Anthony Bassi's pay for good cause and further terminate Mr. Bassi's probationary employment contract for good cause and authority. Bassi of those actions in accordance with applicable laws and policies.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Hellinger and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. I believe that concludes our action on closed session items. I think we'll go back now, Dr. Dupree, to our remaining information item.
Yes, ma'am. Beth Martinez, our Chief of Staff in Strategic Planning, is going to update the board on our comprehensive policy review. She's been working closely with our General Counsel Cynthia Rincon on this work. And our goal for tonight is to really lay out the plan going forward and just to provide a good update as we begin the new year with more intensive work in this area. Beth?
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Good evening, board members. I will be providing a comprehensive overview on our policy process, policy review process this evening, as well as specific information about five policies that we're bringing for you for review this evening and over the break for action in January. So you have a binder at your seat, and I'm going to ask you to please indulge me by not yet opening your binder. I know how much you love binders with multiple tabs, so consider this a gift for the holiday. But if you would, please fight the urge to open the binder.
Thank you so much. It's our first gift from the district. That is so sweet.
It doesn't have a bow.
No bow.
So if you would please not yet open it, we will be doing a complete binder walk in just a few moments, but I want to talk to you a little bit about the process first and give you an overview of what you'll be looking at and what you can count on us to provide to you as we go through this very comprehensive policy overview. And if you can't fight the urge, please feel free to open. But I do want to talk to you about a few things first. This policy review has been a multi-step process and is taking a considerable amount of time to focus on each policy series and specific policies that we will bring to you to recommend for possible revision, possible creation, or creation of new policies or additions, and deletions in some instances. And so this evening, by the time that you leave this evening, you will be quite comfortable in knowing how we're going to communicate those changes to you now and in the future. And you will also know what policies we intend to bring to you for action this month and through March for the E-Policy Series. And the E-Policy Series is related directly to instruction. And then we'll also be able to give you information about certain school board, not school board, SBOE decisions or Supreme Court decisions, and I'll show you some examples. And there are others that we are putting on the docket or on the list for further consideration. And I'll talk to you through each one of those. You'll also be very comfortable with your presentation binder and knowing what order all of the information is provided to you in and what your next steps are for reviewing that information to be prepared for the January board meeting and for providing input to staff as we move forward in the review process. So this is a comprehensive policy review, and it is the most important thing that I think staff has realized through this process is that it is our work to align policy, our local policy, with the board's core beliefs and commitments. And it addresses many of the needs within the district. No, not yet. I'm still on the first slide. Thank you, though. It addresses many of our needs in the district in terms of planning and identifying some gaps, as well as addresses multiple recommendations within the TASSA curriculum audit that was conducted a couple of years ago, as there are several recommendations associated with or related to creation or revision of local policy. So before we really dive in, I'm a teacher at heart, and so I want to do a little pre-assessment. Do any of you know how many local policies we have in the district?
No.
Multiple choice. More than ten, more than a hundred, or more than two hundred?
More than two hundred.
We have one hundred and sixty-eight local policies in our school district. And we have many that are very old. Anyone want to take a guess at the oldest policy or the year of our oldest policy?
Nineteen fifty-nine.
We're a little bit further ahead than that, though, thankfully. Our oldest policy, Ms. James?
Nineteen eighty-two.
Is nineteen eighty. Okay, so we still have a local policy on the books from nineteen eighty. And while we have one hundred and sixty-eight local policies, I want to talk to our community a little bit and give them some background. As you know, as board members, we have legal policy, which is law, and we have local policy, which is the board's policy. And our reason for conducting this extensive policy review, we have three very important reasons. The first being to align with our board's core beliefs and commitments. We want to make sure that these policies, like the one from nineteen eighty, are up to date and that certainly our policies are accurate, that they align with or support the legal policy or the law, and that they don't in any instance contradict the legal policy. So we have to be very careful of those things. And while we have one hundred and sixty-eight local policies, we have more legal policies than that on the books, because not all of our legal policies have a local policy associated with them. It's also important to remind everyone that we can make revisions to our local policy, but not our legal policy. The state provides the legal policy for us. We have gone through, for each of the policy series, which I'll share with you in a moment, an extensive multi-step review process that begins with leaders at the E-Team level and senior leaders, as well as district and campus leaders, reviewing specific policies in each of the policy series and identifying leads. We have, we conduct about sixteen to twenty hours approximately of face-to-face meetings with a core review team. And then those team members go out and work with their departments on each one of the policies. So, for example, in the Policy E-Series, our initial meeting was simply reviewing all of the policies within the E-Series, both local, or both legal and local, and assigning leads within the various departments to go back and review at a deeper level in order to prepare for our next meeting. It's a five-step meeting process, as I said, about sixteen to twenty hours worth of face time with that core planning team. But then there is additional time spent within the departments in gathering information, reviewing, and discussing the practices to make sure that the policies do address our practices and they are accurate up to We have seven policy series, and you'll note that E is toward the bottom, but it is bolded because we started with E as it relates to instruction. That's the first series that we're bringing to you this evening. At the same time, we are doing work on our Policy F Series, which relates to students, and our Policy D Series relating to personnel. When we return from the winter break, we will begin the planning process or the review process with our Policy Series D as well. We plan for the E-Policy Series to be shared with you as board members through March. So we'll be bringing to you local policies as we are tonight. We're bringing five for us to look at and to review over the holiday break for recommendation for adding, for revising, and for deleting. And then when we come together again in January at the workshop, we'll review any feedback that you may have on those five. We'll introduce a new round of Policy E. And then at the business meeting, we will recommend action, or the board's consideration, to take action on the policies that we're reviewing this evening. And then in February, we will follow the same process by reviewing again the policies that we brought forward in January and then receiving input from the board for decision or for action at the second board meeting in February. So we will have a three-part process, if you will, of providing the policy, engaging with the board for input, coming back and discussing those policies at the workshop, and then action at the business meeting. As I mentioned, this evening, we have five policies. We're recommending two of the new, to create two new policies, excuse me, to revise one of our existing local policies, and we're recommending two local policies for deletion. And I'll explain in detail why that is. We're also providing a list to you this evening of local policies that are on hold, and I referenced that briefly. They may be on hold for a variety of reasons. One, for example, is because we're awaiting the Supreme Court decision on one of, that would implicate, not implicate, would have an impact on one of our local policies. And then there are a few that we're waiting on SBOE feedback or decisions that may impact our local policy as well. So our timeline is December through March for just our E-Series and bringing those to you so that we can finalize everything by that March board meeting. And we know that as we plan, we're focusing right now with you on the E-Policy Series, but as you know, time continues, and the start of school is just around the corner. And there may be some policies that are exceptions that may not be within the E-Series policy, but may have timeline implications that we need to bring to the board to review and receive feedback and possibly recommend for action outside of the E-Policy Series. And we'll make sure that we communicate that very well if, in fact, that occurs due to timeline. One that comes to mind is the start of school and the transfer process. There may be some changes to our transfer policies, and if that's the case, we would need to bring those to your attention before bringing the entire F-Policy Series, which could be later in the semester. We want to make sure that we are able to recommend those changes and receive feedback so that we can communicate appropriately to the community. All right, let's do the binder walk. All right, if you would open your binder, please. You'll see that the first thing in your binder is your table of contents. Walk through it with you, but there's not a lot of room up here. All right, your table of contents explains the contents of the binder and the tab that you'll find the information under. So the very first piece is Tab One, and under Tab One, you'll find a memo which reviews a little bit of what I've discussed this evening and then goes into a little bit more detail about the tabs and what's located under each tab. And this is so that a few days into the holiday, it'll serve as a reminder for you. Then we have Tab Two. So please turn to Tab Two, and I want to talk you through this. Tab Two lists all of the policies, all of the local policies in the E-Series. You'll notice that the policy name is in the left corner, the initials. Then we have the policy name, the lead, E-Team, and senior leadership contact on that. We've listed the last date of any policy update to the local policy and then what we are recommending for consideration. So within that, prior to that area, you have a tan, kind of an off-colored band there that says policies recommended for creation, deletion, or revision in January.
I don't think the binders are in color. They're just black and white copies. Ours are not in color.
Dave Rosenthal's is in color.
He must have the original.
The rest of us.
Probably had a bow on his, too. So again, I want to tell you that this, this table shows all of the E-Policies, but your binder does not contain every single one of the local policies related to the E-Series, okay? So the first part of the table there shows you the ones that we're bringing forward to you this evening. If it has a "not applicable" under the column for the last date of update, then that means we do not have a local policy. So EB Local, which pertains to school year, with Dr. Whitbeck as lead, says NA. That means we do not have a local policy. There's not been a last update, and we are recommending to create that policy. EMB is going to be reviewed this evening. That also has no local policy, so we're recommending the creation of that local policy. And then you can see the three others there. We're recommending two for deletion and one for revision. So as you move down this table, the next set of policies are those that are going to be recommended for addition, deletion, or revision at a future board meeting. So those will be the ones that we'll bring to you in February for action in March, for March, I mean, for February and January for action in February, and February for action in March. And then move down with me to either the next tan row or grayish row. And it says policies on hold for additional information. Policies are not included in this binder. So we did not include them, but we will provide them to you when we bring them to, forward for consideration. But you'll see in that far-right column, the reasons, a brief explanation as to why those policies or each policy is currently on hold. If you'll turn to the next page, Page Two. It's just a continuation of those policies that are on hold for additional information. And about a third of the way down the page, policies for further consideration and discussion. Policies are included in this binder behind Tab D. And I'll explain these to you in greater detail as we walk through the binder to Tab D. But each of these policies is provided for your review, and we have a local and a legal, where we have a local and a legal. So as you, as you look through Tab D in a moment, you'll notice that there may be some tabs that do not have a local tab labeled, and that would mean that there is no local policy. Or in some instances, you may find that there's not a legal tab, because in some instances, we do not have a legal policy. All right, on the next page, which is Page Three, this is a continuation of those policies that we are holding for further consideration and discussion. All right, if you'll walk with me through Tab A. Tab A starts the information that we're going to recommend for consideration in January. So this starts the five policies that we will be reviewing in detail. The first two we're recommending are Policy EHAD and EMDA, and these are recommended for deletion. And under each one of the tabs where we're making a recommendation, you'll see explanatory notes there for your review. So the very first page of the tab outlines for you the reason why we're recommending that that policy, which is related to basic instructional program, elective instruction, why it is that we're recommending deletion for that policy. As you can see, we're recommending that because it deals with Texas Parks and Wildlife requiring a policy statement if we teach a hunter course with firearms. And we do not do that in our district, so we're recommending deletion for that. Additionally, the current policy reflects driver's education, which is no longer offered in the district. So both items covered in this policy are not related to our district or needed in our district. Any necessary provisions regarding driver's ed, should the district decide to offer such a course, are already included in EHAD are legal. So we're covered under the law with that provision within our legal policy. Under each tab, you'll notice that the local policy we're recommending for addition, deletion, or creation is there, as well as the legal policy for your review. The other policy that we're recommending for deletion is EMDA, which is miscellaneous instructional policies. And we're recommending the deletion of this policy because it's regarding the daily recitation of the pledge, which is already covered under legal. So as you turn, you'll see the examples there, or not the examples, the policy EHAD Local, which relates to driver's ed. And then the EHAD Legal, which is three pages. And then EMDA Local, which is the one related to the Pledge of Allegiance. And then behind that, you'll see EC Legal. Now, that's different, because I mentioned to you that EMDA, the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance, is covered under legal policy. It is covered under legal policy EC Legal. That's why that one is different from the letters on the local policy. Anyone have any questions so far? Why different? I'm going to ask for Cynthia Rincon to answer that, because she is proficient in policy and has been helping us through this process. And the question is, why is EC Legal, the legal policy that supports the removal of EMDA, because the call letters?
So I think what happened is when the EMDA Local was created, that was actually done without, probably they didn't see that the, it would have been EC Local that would have had something about recitation of the pledge. Without having more historical knowledge, I can only imagine that they created that policy without, you know, sometimes we do find information in a different policy, but other than the historical information that I don't have.
Normally, they match.
They do match. But, but usually, the nuance is in where we put the local information, not the legal. Like typically, if there's a legal and a recommended local, they'll match. But if we create something, sometimes in the past, that didn't match.
Okay.
To me, what's most telling on this is that EMDA dates back to nineteen eighty-five.
Right, right.
And so it's very possible EC Legal did not include the pledges until some point after that. So that could be why there's a misalignment.
Sometimes, yes, especially if the board had decided to take action back then on their own, and Dr. Dupree is correct, if there wasn't a legal policy that necessarily supported those actions, that they might not match at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. And it's important to note, I know that you all are very aware of the fact that there has not been a comprehensive policy review, I venture to say, ever in the history of Forbin ISD. We receive policy updates, and through the years, you know, we've complied with those policy updates. This is the first time we've looked at all of the policy, how it relates to other policies and what impacts those policies. So it's been a very interesting process so far. All right, under the next tab, which is Tab B, you'll find the E-Series policies that are recommended for creation. And this is where we have a legal, but no local policy in that area. And so we have two this evening that we're recommending. One is EB Local, which deals with school year, and we're recommending the addition of this local policy. And I want to talk to you really about this one, because we're offering three options for your review and consideration. In EB Local, the policy, the draft policy, gives the authority of the superintendent to get, he gives the superintendent the authority to act in two critical situations with regard to the calendar. One is approving variations from the board-adopted school calendar and closing school for reasons of public health and safety. It also gives the superintendent the authority to act when an immediate need arises. So we've provided you with three options for your consideration. The first one is the one I explained above, giving authority to the superintendent in both of those cases. The second option is the same authority as in Option One, so giving the superintendent authority for both of those actions, but requiring that the superintendent first informs the board before a decision is made. And the third option provides the superintendent authority regarding school closure, but does not delegate authority regarding the school calendar. So you'll see that behind this tab, you have three options for that policy revision. And you also have, or policy addition, pardon me, and you also have EB Legal, which is the legal policy for your review. The next set is EMB Local, which is related to miscellaneous instructional policies, teaching about controversial issues. And this creation is recommended as the policy provides teacher guidance regarding presenting various sides of controversial issues contained within the curriculum while ensuring alignment with the tenants provided in board policy EG Local. So we did not have a local policy, but this aligns with or is supported by EG Local, and we made sure to make reference of that in the first part of that policy. So you'll also notice, if you have some, a binder in color, that these policies will be blue, indicating that these are additions or new policies. Any questions on this section?
No. And actually, ours are in blue. We figured Dave's were probably in rainbow or something.
All right, the next tab, which is Tab C, are those policies that we're recommending for revision. And this month, it is one policy, which is EJ Local, which is academic, the Academic Guidance Program. And this is being recommended to provide further detail regarding the current program and implementation of the program, as well as to align the current policy with district practices. And that's in light of the fact that counselors are not assigned the primary task of test responsibility any longer. And there's additional text that's been added to ensure alignment with the board's core beliefs and commitments. So we, I know that the staff on this one, Lupita Garcia and Steve Shields, really took a deep dive on this with their department to ensure that, from the counseling perspective, the counselors are guided by this policy in a way that incorporates the things that we have been talking about as being so important and impacting students in a proactive manner to increase student engagement, to increase attendance, and to decrease discipline, help them make good decisions and good choices. So it's about guidance counseling, and also you will, if you'll read it within that policy, they've been careful to incorporate how they're guiding students to make better decisions and to make decisions that will help them to be proactive contributing citizens within this community. So behind that tab, you see the associated local and legal policies. Are there any questions on Tab C? All right, we're moving to Tab D. And Tab D references the large chunk of policies that follow. And these are those policies that I mentioned in the long table as being those policies that we have listed as needing further consideration or discussion. So at first glance, these policies may appear that no revisions are necessary. In some instances, there's no local, and at first, at first pass, the legal policy may seem to be appropriate. In some instances, the local policy that we have in these areas does seem to be in alignment with our board's core beliefs and commitments, as well as up to date and accurate. We'd like to take this time over the holidays, staff is reviewing this in greater detail and greater depth, and we would like to provide you this opportunity throughout the holiday break to review these policies as well. And you've been provided the local and legal, as I mentioned before, where both exist. You'll find some legal without local and some local without legal, but where there are both, you will receive both. And at this point, we are, we are recommending that, or we feel strongly that these policies are in alignment with the three tents that we've been reviewing to ensure that our policy is complete. However, it does, it does warrant further consideration and further discussion. So we're hoping, if you have any questions or input, that you will email that to us over the break or before the board workshop in January, or be able to discuss that during that board workshop in January to finalize whether or not these policies, in fact, need any changes or are able to be processed through.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that?
Yes.
Because I'm, I really like to be sure I understand my homework. So the homework essentially is read these. If there's something that stands out to us as something that needs to change, or we don't think it aligns with our core beliefs and commitments, et cetera, point that out to you. And in parallel, the administrative team is doing the same thing, and they'll bring any suggestions or comments and questions, and we'll have that kind of conversation in January.
Yes, ma'am. And we have reviewed these. An example that comes to my mind, one of the ones that we're recommending this evening for, as a new policy, EMB Local, that has a legal policy that, you know, at first glance, you might read and think, all right, we're fine following legal. We're bound by law to do that. But at deeper dive, we really, that was one that stood out to us as not cover, the legal policy didn't adequately communicate our core beliefs and commitments. So we feel that we have reviewed these, but just believe that it needs a little bit more attention to make sure that we're all in agreement, that what is currently here does address our core beliefs and commitments. We know that they're accurate, and we know that, that they are up to date. We just want to make sure that we have, that we have alignment with our core beliefs and commitments with a little bit more time to review those and to receive feedback from the board.
Good, thank you very much.
You know, might, I might interject on this one, because I do, I want to make sure the board really understands, the one that I brought, I brought to Beth's attention was like EHAA. I don't expect you to go there, but it gets into our required instructional programs. And it's a legal policy that requires the foundation, the enrichment curriculum, the various types of curriculum. the various types of curriculum bilingual ESL. But knowing the board's thinking in terms of all students achieving their full potential, the board may want to, upon your review, look at interjecting just a couple of paragraphs in a local policy to really define what we mean in Fort Bend ISD and some of these things. So I think most of these probably don't need any further attention. But knowing your perspectives, I think there'll be some of them, you'll want to go a little deeper to just to guide a little more narrow focus for the administration and for the community to make a statement and to support our work going forward. So if you look at it through that lens, I think that'll be helpful.
And then, once we receive your feedback, for example, if you looked at that policy and you agreed with Dr. Dupree that perhaps we need to consider a local policy with some language, we will do research regarding what are other districts using, what other policies are available, what recommendations are provided by our policy consultant, what other information have the districts brought to the table, and how we can align what you're sharing with us with those other policies that are currently being used.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. Ms. Hollinger has a question or comment?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for my present, my Christmas present. I appreciate the reading. I would like to know, can we add another policy to our list? I really would like to look at the policy concerning how late work is being implemented across the board, because it's being implemented differently. I think the policy kind of leads, you know, each campus to kind of do what they would, you know, would like with that. But, you know, some campuses is harsher, some campuses is leaner, and that impacts grades and impacts, you know, overall GPA. So I really would like to look at that one as well.
Yes, ma'am. We are looking at that one as one of the next rounds that we bring forward to you.
Okay.
Absolutely. EIA. And that, if you look under Tab 2, it's on that second section. It's about halfway down the page. It was last revised in February of 2014. And that's part of the next round that we'll bring forward to you in January when we return.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Is that also the policy that talks about the number of grades per semester? That was, what was it, EI?
EIA.
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 I've gotten a lot of feedback on that from teachers. So, yeah, that's something that...
Mr. Rosenthal, I believe that the procedures are regulation, not policy regarding late work. But we are looking at the variation from campus to campus and talking about some parameters to bring to you.
Well, this, the one, we need to look at that too. But the one I was looking at was the requirements on the teachers for the number of grades per nine-week period. Yes, well, all kinds come at the total, really. So, anyway, okay, I'll look at that.
I'd agree with that as well, because as we're in exam week right now, we're crunching a lot of grades in at the end. I think that's what our kids are experiencing and what our teachers are experiencing. So I don't know which policy that is, but that's probably one I think we want to look at. Okay, same one, okay.
I want to point out, too, the next layer of this is, once the local policy is approved, is really drilling down to those administrative regulations where the practice and processes are to ensure that alignment to our local policy. So the local policy should drive our administrative regulations. And as you can imagine, with it not, we've not had a comprehensive policy review. We've not had a comprehensive administrative regulation review and revision. And so that is a part, and a very important part of this process because then that lines out our work, which supports the policy.
One of the other things I wanted to add about EIA specifically is the board shared with us after Level 3 grievance, their thoughts and directive about reviewing that policy. So we are reviewing those policies. We take the information that the board provides us here at the board meetings. We take information that we receive when we are working through grievance processes, whether they get to the board or not. We're constantly making notes about what revisions we need to make, both in the policy recommendations to the board and the administrative regulations. So we take everything that we're working on daily. And we have a running tab, so to speak, that has become part of our policy review. So when you give us information such as after that Level 3 grievance, then we take that back and consider, how do we respond to the board and how do we ensure that we're doing what you're asking us to do?
And we appreciate that because that's incredible. That loop is really helpful to make sure that eventually we get things right, so.
Great, okay. Did you have anything, any more information you needed to share with us, Mrs. Martinez?
Ma'am, that's it.
All right, do we have any other questions? Everybody, those of you that are going to China and you've got your binders and you'll have something to read on the airplane. Excellent, thank you very much, and thank you for starting this. I'm very proud of us for undertaking this in a systematic and thoughtful way. And I know it's a tremendous amount of work for you and all these folks. And I recognize that, and I think we all recognize that. But we also think it's really important because it makes it so that people know what to expect and we don't have contradictions and confusion. And, you know, it makes what our intentions are very clear, and that's what we want to do, so. Thank you very much for getting this started and getting us going. We appreciate that very much. All right, that concludes our information items. So now we are on to board members' reports. Our first report is the Board of Trustees Training Report. Am I supposed to be reading that, or is Mrs. Tosan supposed to be reading it? I don't have it either.
Well, I can share that all of our board members have exceeded the required number of training hours. So congratulations, board. Thank you for investing that amount of time in your own professional development as trustees.
We couldn't do it for a better cause, Dr. Dupree. All right, well, well done, team. All right, our next item then is the Activity Report, Mrs. Tosan.
Yes, Mrs. James. Our Activity Report since our last meeting, end of November, beginning of December. We attended the Europe and Transatlantic with Stephen F. Austin, the Jingle Tree with the Houston Museum of Natural Science, the state volleyball tournament, Ridge Point Football Playoff Games. Woo-hoo, they did great. I would like to commend them on their efforts. The VIP Salute, Ferndale Henry Art Gallery, Fort Bend Chamber Holiday Luncheon, Settlers Way Elementary School Visit, Lakeview Elementary Spelling Bee, Greater Houston Partnership Elected Officials Reception, Holiday Choral Concert, the Tazbee December Board Meeting, Leadership Tazbee Session 2, Texas Association of Gifted and Talented Conference, Briargate Elementary School Staff Appreciation Breakfast, CTE Town Halls, Ridge Point High School FFA Thanksgiving Dinner, Baines Middle School Basketball Games, Ridge Point High School Swim Meets, Baines Middle School Band Concerts and Choir Concerts. I think that concludes the report.
Thank you. Once again, we've been very busy. Do we have any special reports tonight from any of the trustees?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. George.
Yeah, I just want to report back to the board and to the public. And I did attend the Leadership Tazbee Session Number 2. It was quite an experience. We visited two school districts, one in Dallas, which is called, both are in Dallas, Lancaster ISD, which is, they are an amazing campus. And it's a lot of things we can learn from them. But one thing I learned from them is the collaboration with the community and also collaboration with the local businesses. And they do an exceptional job in that. And it is a K through 12 STEM campus. And they don't have a lot of money. Their median home prices are around $95,000. So it teaches, I learned, what I learned from their activities, and they have 100% graduation rate. What I learned is they Texas Instruments provide them with a $5 million grant and so many businesses in that area, which I think we have a lot of room for improvement. So that was quite a learning experience for me. And the second one, school district I visited, was Frisco ISD, which is one of the richest in Dallas area. And one thing quite amazes me is that when they opened the first high, sorry, the university high school, the principal said they visited every child's home. They made a home visit, around 900 students. And I thought that was quite a very good initiative to show the parents they care. So that was quite an experience for me. There's a lot of stuff I could go on, but because of the constraint of time, I'm going to cut short. But where I learned was it's with the community and also a CTE center I visited. Then the last one I attended is Texas Gifted and Talented Associations Conference, which is also, we met some of our colleagues, sorry, some of our leaders from this district. And also, I got to point out, Coyle Valley Middle School teachers and students did an outstanding presentation about outside-the-classroom learning. And it was well-received, and I congratulate them for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. If you have any of that written down, if you could give it to Mrs. Kaiser, since she can more easily put it in a minute, that'd be helpful. Any other special reports, Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Madam President. In my role as a director with the Texas Association of School Boards, I attended a meeting on December 5. In addition to general business that the Tazbee Board was conducting, the governmental and reg, governmental staff presented a legislative update, which I'm going to share with you briefly. A copy of this has been given to Mrs. Kaiser, Mrs. James, and so she can make it available to the entire board. First of all, the State Board of Education is, will take action in January on the changes proposed by the State Board for Educator Certification on the issuance of superintendent certificates. They have added two new pathways for certification. And Tazbee has reviewed the changes and issued a letter of support to the State Board of Education members. I have that letter attached for your review, if you're interested, Dr. Dupree. In addition to that, I have invited the State Board of Education Chair, Donna Bohoric, to speak at the Fort Bend Chamber of Commerce. And she is coming on June 10 to share comments with us. She will also appear at the Gulf Coast Area Association of School Boards on Wednesday, April 27, for all of us to attend. So we have two opportunities to listen to Ms. Bohoric and ask questions. Second, the Texas Commission on Next Generation Assessments and Accountability. Governor Abbott, Lieutenant Governor Patrick, and Speaker Joe Strauss have named respective appointees to the newly-created Texas Commission on Next Generation Assessments and Accountability. They have authorized the creation of the commission with the purpose of developing and making recommendations for new systems of student assessment and public school accountability no later than September 1 of next year. Abbott has appointed and named Dallas ISD trustee Mike Morath as the presiding officer. There are some other folks that he has appointed as well as Lieutenant Governor Patrick and Speaker Strauss. Mike Morath is on the Tazbee Board of Directors with me. I've invited him to come speak to the Fort Bend Chamber on February 12. He's accepted that invitation, and today he was named as the next Commissioner of Education. So we may move the venue over to the Administrative Annex. We may have a few more folks in attendance. Districts of Innovation. A district of innovation is a concept passed by the 84th Legislature in House Bill 1842 that gives traditional school districts most of the flexibilities available to open enrollment charter schools in Texas. So there's a document that I've included, why would a school district want to be an innovation district? And there are reasons for that, pro and con. I won't go into all of them at this time. There was also a Committee to Study Teacher Retirement System Health Benefits that will be chaired, and we'll be hearing from that in the future. Here's an item of note. There were results of school district bonds. On November 3, voters of 42 different school districts had the opportunity to vote on 46 bond propositions that in the aggregate totaled $6.43 billion, primarily for school construction renovations and expansions. 86% of the bond programs passed, accounting for $6.3 billion. So just in the Houston area alone, there are over $1.2 billion of bonds that have been added into the region that may have an impact on our bond program. The City of Austin Property Tax Lawsuit. A Travis County District Judge has dismissed a lawsuit by the City of Austin that challenged the state's property tax system as unfair and creates imbalances in tax burdens between residential and commercial property owners. It may be appealed if Austin agrees to do that, but I don't know if they will. It may have some bearing on the Supreme Court decision expected in March on the school finance lawsuit. And then lastly, I just wish to remind my colleagues here that the Tazbee Grassroots Meeting for Region 4 will be held on February 10 from 5:30 to 9 at Region 4. Dinner will be provided. And this is a very important opportunity for all school board members to prepare a list of the five top issues to be undertaken during the 85th Legislative Session. Again, I have submitted a copy of this to Mrs. Kaiser. And Mrs. Kaiser, if you'd be so kind as to distribute that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Thank you for that report, and thank you for bringing those things to our attention. And thank you for scheduling those speakers in our community in the upcoming months. That's very nice, and it helps our community to be more informed about issues in public education, which are important. Thank you very much for that. All right, we're now ready to move on to our next item of business. We have the Consent Agenda. Do we have any items that we'd like to remove from the Consent Agenda to Action?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to remove, where'd it go? Ah, there it is. The Item 11A.
Item 11A, Move to Action. Do we have any others? Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion for the Consent Agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 11B through H as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. Rosenthal for Consent Agenda Items 11B through 11H. Do we have discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Now we'll move on to Action, which would be for Item 11A. Mr. Rosenthal, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Madam President, I move for the district to proceed with conceptual planning for updates to career and technology education, CTE, facilities at three high schools, Austin, Bush, and Ridge Point, and the future design and construction of a centralized facility for the delivery of career and technical education with the goals of, one, providing equitable access to advanced CTE programs for all FBISD students, and, two, providing students with the opportunity to earn certifications and dual credit by assessing industry-standard equipment in real-world experiences.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenthal and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rosenthal.
I would like to read the rationale/summary that is before all of us. And up on the screen, but I can't read that far, so I'll read it in front of me. Rationale/summary, FBISD recognizes that not all students will choose a traditional four-year university program immediately following high school graduation. FBISD also recognized that many industry experts expect a strong demand for skilled workers across a variety of sectors. Therefore, the first priorities of the CTE Center are to develop new and to strengthen existing CTE programs geared toward students who may wish to enter the workforce either immediately or within two years of high school graduation. These courses would, however, be open to all students regardless of their post-high school plans. Additional programs at the CTE Center will provide support for academic classes that require expensive, highly-specialized equipment, making it unfeasible for these programs to be available at all comprehensive high schools. Program flexibility and enterprise opportunities may also be incorporated into future planning for the new CTE Center.
All right. Do we have any additional discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll, please vote. Motion passes. We're moving on now. Next item is our Future Board Meeting Agenda Items.
Yes, ma'am. We're on Page 85 of the board book. I guess, if you don't mind, I would like to acknowledge, we've got a lot of white shirts over here. There are CTE team members who've waited long for that vote, and they've all invested a great deal of time in planning for that, along with Meredith and other members of the team. So I do just want to acknowledge them, number one, for being here tonight in support of their program, and for all the hours they've invested in preparing the proposal for the board's consideration. So we're all pleased to be at this point, and we appreciate the board's support. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here.
And thank you, staff, for all you've done to get us here.
If I could, I would also like to acknowledge Meredith, and I thought her presentations last week with the community were excellent, despite the second night having the district push out a reset of all the district computer-wide systems right in the middle of your presentation. But nevertheless, she made it through, and it was excellent, and I thought she made some key points, and I think it was well-received. And I'm glad that we're finally going to move forward with this, and I think this is the right pathway to go.
Thank you. So going forward into January, it's just going to be here before we know it, I'm not going to read all of these to you, but some highlights for the January are going to be, as Beth has already talked about, the policy updates. We've also, we're going to provide an update on the improvement required schools, that you approved those plans last week. A few program updates on community relations, a major bond program update, including a report by the committee chair of our Bond Oversight Committee. And we'll also ask you to approve the district calendar in January. Going forward in February, I'll remind you, we're going to follow up on the investment in CNG buses and infrastructure, along with our Texas Academic Performance Report, and we're really going to start getting into budget development in January and February, along with the development of the district strategic plan. February will also include the enrollment update and demographic update as we begin planning the budget for the following year, as well as consideration of the Educational Technology Plan. Beyond that, it's really a lot of budget, a lot of technology items, and program updates, including bilingual and ESL, and then additional technology items going into the April and into the summer months, along with the budget. So if you've got any questions or feedback, please feel free to share those, and we'll update accordingly.
I don't, we talked earlier about the CSPs coming forward, maybe in April? I didn't see that on here, is that?
You're correct. We've not added those on here yet.
All right. And, okay, were there any, were there any other comments or questions? All right, thank you very much. Well, the next item on our agenda is adjournment, and since it's before 10 o'clock, I'm pretty excited about that. A second.
OSHA to adjourn.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you very much.